Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call on the February 21st, 2024. What do we need to order? Let me begin by asking each commissioner to please respond only here when I call out your name. Commissioner Bell. Here. And Commissioner Duggan. Here. Commissioner Fisher. Here. And Commissioner Rysick. Here. Thank you, everybody. We will begin this evening by reporting to our chief executive officer and the management staff all.
Any presenters, I think we're having a bit of a challenge here, so we're change the focus to
The rescue guy in everything. About the technical later that guy. Firefighter. He's the chief engineer. What doesn't he do?
So before we begin, we had the morning happening with you at the last work session, talking about one hour, half another half hour. We came to here for over two hours. So tonight's agenda, bringing you out a little bit early. It's a river line agenda. We have a quick update there on the customer assistance program. We talked about having a presentation here. We're actually going to reschedule the update of the customer assistance program until probably the board meeting in April. Staff is working with the third party verification and also moving the business processes in our new CIS. We have that information available for that update. So we're targeting board meeting. Sorry, the board work session April to have that presentation. Quick reminder on the customer phone survey. As part of the water supply integration, we are gathering information from our customers. So this week contractor will begin calling randomly customers within TVWD, the city of Hillsborough, the city of Bemerton, our customers. And the purpose of that call, the survey, is to understand the perceptions and the options of drinking water in advance of the long water supply integration. So this is getting ahead of that. We're trying about 400 respondents, but board members and staff and bench committee members are asked not to respond to the survey. We want to make sure that the results are unbiased by getting our customers that aren't quite as familiar with women as the rest of us might be. So if you do get these calls, it's a statistical improbability, but certainly a possibility. Please just let it pass by. Beyond talking water events on Thursday, this doesn't look right to me.
Twenty nine.
Thursday, February 29th. That doesn't sound right to me either, but I guess it's the 29th. They have 29 days in this, in this February. Anyway, it's Thursday, February 29th. This is a time of graphical error. From 12 to 1:00 PM, there will be access on the website. So you can go to the website to get a link that will access the meeting. That's six things you, six things to know about your water service. So we're going to have our staff. It's, it's going to be a great time. We've done this in the past. No registration required, just get the link off our website. You can join in for that important information. Last item I want to highlight here actually is a bit of a success story, one more success that we've seen in the long water supply program. We did, with cooperation with Washington County, close Roy Rogers Road over the President's Day weekend to install 250 feet of our 66 inch diameter pipe. The road closure actually started on Friday night at 7:00 PM and we reopened it on Monday at 5:00 PM. It requires over an hour of work to get the, everything done. That included installing the pipe, backfilling and restoring the pavement. So all that was done during that period. To limit the impact on customers and citizens, drivers were notified in advance with signs, trip check, and also information on the city and county's websites and news updates. In cooperation with Washington County, the detour routes were actually worked on in advance and were approved to minimize the impact on customers. The long water supply program outreach team worked with the local businesses to manage the impacts that would be on them. And this is a successful completion of that installation. Just as one more risk eliminated, significant construction schedule risk eliminated for the program. So this is an important milestone as we go forward. And of course, we appreciate the cooperation with Washington County. And along the road to be closed is really the only way to get that work done in a timely manner. So this is again, we're watching those risks, just kind of set by this was an important one for us. So congratulations to the program team, Dave and his team for getting in. With that, the chairman of the council is going to present our department report.
Good evening, commissioners. So this evening I'll be giving an update about Equal Employment Opportunity Commission reporting. The report that our district has to file every other year is called the EEO four report. So I want to give a little bit of a background on this commission. It's a federal commission that is responsible for enforcing Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which prohibits discrimination in employment based on race, color, religion, sex and national origin. So the EEOC, we love an acronym in HR, so we'll just refer to them as that. They're charged with investigating discrimination against employers that would be covered by the law. They are also charged with preventing discrimination and they do that through outreach, education and their technical assistance programs. Another thing that they require employers to do is to file periodic reports on workforce demographics. And that's something that we're responsible for doing in my team. We do that every other year. So local governments all file every other year. We do it in years ending in an odd number. So we just filed ours for 2023 and our next report will be due in 2025. We collect a variety of information. We collect race and ethnicity data. We collect sex and gender data, job categories and salary. And I would show you what the actual report looks like, but it is not created by someone with a high degree of data visualization skills. So it's very hard to get through and it's very lengthy. But in general, we look at race and gender demographics and we compare that to different job categories as defined by the EEOC with salary bands as defined by the EEOC. And this is important for a couple of different reasons. Number one is we want to comply with all the federal regulations that we need to as an employer. We also want to be able to identify potential disparities with our workforce demographics. And we can use this information to benchmark and monitor any progress on DEI efforts. This is a report we've been filing for many, many, many years. I'm going to show information for our most recent one, but I'm happy to follow up if the board's interested in seeing trends over time or anything like that. Brief disclaimer, there are some limitations to this data. One of those limitations is the US census categories. Not everybody fits nicely into those categories. So we have to assume that employees will just choose what one they most identify with. And a good example of that is someone who is from the Middle East or from North Africa. They might not have a category in the census that they really identify with. So they're forced to choose they're white or Caucasian, they might choose African American. There's kind of not a lot of options for them. So the data is limited in that sense. It's also just limited to race and gender for this report. We don't ask any other questions of employees about things like disability status, about their age. We don't add any of those other categories in there. So the EEO, they just want to know race and gender statistics. It's also self-reported upon hire. So when we hire a new employee, they fill out a lot of new hire paperwork with our team. They can do that online now, which we're very excited about. But one of the things they fill out is they are self-reporting EEO category information. And so employee can fill that out. They can also opt to not fill that out. And if the employee does not fill that out, then the employer is allowed by law to make an assumption or a best guess on what categories we would assign for that person, which feels really icky to do, but it doesn't happen very often. I actually don't think it's ever happened here at TVWD. So just a couple of limitations on the data. Want to show you percentage wise what we found in our 2023 report. We filed this in December. So these are the workforce demographics of our organization right now. And at the very bottom, you'll see the TVWD service area for our race and ethnicity categories. So looking at the top there, we have our gender split. And I didn't put the service category, service area is 50 50. We're real darn close. As you can see, we're, we skew a little heavily toward the men. And we can see that here in this room tonight. Hi Heather. And that could be for a variety of reasons. I don't want to speculate too much, but we do have a lot of positions that are out in the field that generally tend to attract more male candidates. I would assume that's one of the reasons that we see that big differential there. And below that, you'll see our race and ethnicity demographic information with our employee base and then our service area. The service area is our best guess. I worked with our team in the GIS division to ask for their help on collecting that information. It's based off of census blocks, so there's some good guessing in there, but we're pretty confident that this is, you know, it's, it's pretty darn close. And you'll see that we don't match up with our service area too well in most of these categories. And we are not in alignment for American Indian or Alaska natives. We're not in alignment with our service area for folks who would identify as Asian, for employees who would identify as black or African American, Hispanic or Latino. We do have a pretty strong number of native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders here, and we love them. They're awesome. And then two or more races category, we're also a little bit off on that. And then we tend to have a lot more white employees than our service area. This is just a snapshot in time as of December of 2023, when we pulled this data. And I'm happy to share more detailed trends over time if the board is interested in looking at that. I want to talk a little bit, this is my last slide, a little bit about how we can use demographic data and DEI. One of the ways we can use this is to pinpoint areas for improvement and apply different interventions. And these interventions here are just examples of things we could do. We can target our outreach effort for employment to women, to people of color. And I put people with bilingual skills on there because that is definitely a need in our community. And we've been doing that for a number of our positions, most recently with our customer service reps. And we've got a number of bilingual folks in that team. Another thing we could consider doing is to create programs that expose various population groups to the water utility sector for their careers. And that's something we've talked about. We've talked about it, I think, as a leadership team a little bit. I know Paul and I have talked about it a number of times. And there's a lot of ways to do that or to, you know, either create a new program or work with an existing program to help kind of highlight this as an option for careers. Then another thing that we can do, and we sort of are doing this right now, I think we can improve a little bit, is to highlight our commitment to equity and inclusion in our job announcements and our recruitment materials. So we want to look at our demographic data. We want to be collecting good data and use that data to pinpoint those areas for improvement so that we can apply interventions and ideally see us sort to start to reflect our service area closely. That is my update for the board. Does anybody have any questions?
Why aren't we doing so well with Asian Pacific Islanders? And
Nope, no. Except for that, I just want to
I just ask that facetiously because the rest of the data does look like we aren't very representative even of our citizenry here in the district.
But You know, with Pacific Islanders, native Hawaiians, and we're a little overrepresented on our white employees. But our other categories, we are a little bit lower. So it's quite a bit lower.
From the perspective, that would be maybe two, three employees.
Yeah, I know. I was asking facetiously, I think is very important, especially the interventions that you're, you're talking about here. So glad to see that, that we're cognizant and we're correcting that, even though our board seems to have the same challenge as well currently.
And we're not alone in that challenge. Many other public employers in our community are in similar positions.
I've got a couple of questions. Do we have a differential for bilingual skills? Okay. Excellent. The other question was if you have a sense, you know, we don't need a two decimal point comparison, but how the water sector in general shapes up relative to those demographics?
I don't have that information and I've, I haven't looked super hard for it. I did reach out to the state of Oregon as they coordinate all of the water operator licenses. They don't collect that information themselves. I was hoping to get that information, at least on the operator side, to see if it reflects our employment base. But they don't collect that data. No, but that's something we can look into.
The management report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. The next agenda item this evening is reports of movements intended. And I'll begin this evening with Commissioner Dow.
Okay. Well, that's tonight's meeting. There was the work session earlier this month. And then toward the end of last month was the one running take facilities. Waiting. Everything seems to be on drink as far as I'm concerned.
That's fine. Great.
Sorry, Special Districts Association. Bye.
Thank you, Commissioner Dow. Commissioner Duggan.
Well, on January 24th, I attended the Metro Impact Meeting where the elected officers and had a presentation by representatives from the Oregon Office of Economics and presentation on the current state of the economy in Oregon, which is doing better than, than that was expected a year ago at this time. On the first of February, we had the WWSS board meeting that we got the complete lowdown at our work session on February 6th, week later. On the 7th, I attended the Regional Water Providers Conservation Board Meeting where we approved budget and concept and approved strategic plan. Last Tuesday, the 13th, I attended Washington County CPO number one, where our Frank Reed gave the TVWD update, talked about the response to the winter storm and the flushing program and all, all the things that district is working on. Did a very good job in, in place of normal, normally Justin being there. And then tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. Commissioner Fisher.
I started off on the 23rd of January by attending the Westside Economic Alliance Pledge of Form along with several other members of the TVWD community. And then on the 24th, I attended a meetup with the mayor of Tiger to share updates about the city and district and surrounding communities. And then on the 3rd of February, I attended the constituent coffee for a rep Bowman to hear updates about what he specifically was going to be advocating for during the short session that's currently ongoing. And then work session, agenda planning meeting. And then last week I met with our friends at CFM Advocates since we were lobbying that week for HP 4128, which is essentially our sort of short session water infrastructure package. And then tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Rysick.
My form includes the January meetings, which I mentioned before, but hadn't submitted a form for. So the VRJOC, JWC board meetings on January 12th, the TVWD board meeting on January 17th, the work session on February 6th, the SDAO conference, the utility management conference, which was last week, and then tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Rysick. And for myself, I met with Paul on the 18th, the 23rd, along with Commissioner Fisher and Paul, our CEO, attended the Westside Economic Alliance Forum meeting. Met with Paul again on the first, the monthly work session on the sixth, did some op ed editing. On the 7th and then the 9th, met with Norman Ewer. The 13th was the agenda planning session, which has already been mentioned. And then a couple of days of outreach, of getting people to help with outreach and then doing outreach myself to state legislators. And then tonight's meeting. So there we go. With that then, we move on to the next item, which are topics to be raised by the commissioners. And do we have any topics to be raised by commissioners this evening?
Now here, we move into the next agenda item, which is public comment. Public comment time set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda that manage the regalia of the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items that, as they are presented. Do we have any persons this evening who'd like to comment?
Seeing any person, Commissioner Sanders, I do have one attendee online. Sandra Beardsley, do you wish to submit public comment at this time? I'll give you a moment to unmute.
Sorry, I had to figure out how to turn it on. No, I'm good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. In that case then, we move on to the next agenda item, which is our consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine, where we act to win motion without separate discussion. Any more members may request an item moved by motion for discussion and separate action. Any item requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items, which do not require discussion. Age terms. Does the name of the June 17th, 2024 regular work meeting minutes? The 736th, 2024 regular work session meeting minutes? And the 11th water supplies and grant technical correction? Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Commissioner Duggan, so vote. Commissioner Rysick, second.
Thank you. All of the panel teams say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Now, here, a motion passes. We move on to the next item, the new agenda item number three, which is our business agenda, where we will adopt the regional principles. Receive a staff report from Paul Matthews, our chief executive officer. So Paul. Thank you, President Sanders. And well, if you want to present up here tonight, it's not very much. You saw it at the work session, but I think it's important to get it in the public record. So we're going to go through it here one more time. So to make a quick little presentation, we'll talk about the, the goals for our regional principals or trying to achieve the objectives that we have with that. The shooting, the regional principals themselves, and again, you saw this earlier this month. And then I'll provide some highlights on the resolution that adopts those. So first of all, one of the objectives that we have is to improve relationships with our regional stakeholders. By communicating with these principles on how we'll support utilities. So we want to be a little bit more predictable, so if you can understand how to do business with TVWD. Improve the district's ability to react to regional needs in a timely manner. It'll further prepare the district for its evolving regional role. And I'm happy to say that we've always seen some of those benefits. It was last week or week before when our partners lost a bit of chlorine at one of their equipment plants. We have people who have the hazmat driving credentials that are needed to transport that chlorine on behalf of a partner. And we're able to, to help that partner in a time that was really important to, to the region, their customers. In fact, so these principles guided us. Pete and I used it just today to make sure that we're in alignment, how we're going to treat that situation. So it's been evidence already. There are three elements to the principles themselves. The first are TVWD's enterprise level commitments, and I'll show what those are here in a bit. Our region commitments and one of the threshold criteria that we use. And that's how we evaluate potential partnerships. Should somebody reach out to us and say, can you, can you be of assistance? So TVWD's goals first, the preservation of public health and safety. And that was one of the most important things we're considering, our role in helping our partner with the chlorine situation. The restoration of our resilient reliable water system and the highest standards of quality and professionals. So those are the three things that we've committed to and those we consider to be our enterprise level commitments. The regional commitments, and this is going with you that you haven't seen here before, but first, TVWD is committed to equitable, fair, regional beneficial and meaningful partnerships that respect jurisdictional boundaries. TVWD is committed to transparency among all interested entities. And as a public agency, TVWD's actions are a matter of public record. So it's pretty easy to comply with. TVWD is committed to providing mutual aid to neighboring public agencies. Mutual aid include reciprocal arrangements for water or other services, fee-based services, or other arrangements where appropriate. And TVWD will endeavor to respond to requests for assistance in timely manner in accordance with the highest professional standards. So when we talk about the reciprocal arrangements and fee-based services, we do that, for example, when we offer services to the city of Bemerton, moving their meters on a fee basis. Those services that we provide to our moving utilities to move chlorine, the chlorine gas, we do that on a reciprocal basis. They can help us in some circumstances as well. So I'm going to evaluate our participants in regional partnerships. These are the threshold criteria. First, is the request consistent with TVWD's mission, mission values? This is already gotten right there with the mission, mission values. We started valuing consistency there. Does the request serve the best interest of our customers to build and maintain reciprocal relationships with their utilities? Third, does TVWD have the resources, expertise and equipment and the system capacity, all those things to meet the requested cost effect manner in the last eight years? Is TVWD in the best position to provide the services that are requested? We're evaluating the proposed partnership from those perspectives and offer a, a decision based on that. So it sounds a little bit boring because the current result, for example, in IG or something that nature obviously the board will be involved in those. Several decisions don't happen quite quickly, like the need to move chlorine gas. We just had to move through the decisions. These principles, they will guide our behavior and make sure that we're working in the overall district's interest. So we didn't put this in the resolution. The reason for the resolution is provides an opportunity to run the context and the recitals. So as you look at the board back and you see the recitals that we have, the goal was to get that in the record, make sure people understand why we are adopting those regional principles. And we need to highlight some of the past regional efforts that TVWD has led and let folks know that this is an important part of, of our organization. The regional principles, I'm looking at the example to the resolution itself. As a separate documents, we can handle the resolution. We can just say, these are the principles that were adopted. The resolution should also encourage me, which then implies the entire team that we have here, to align our activities with the regional principles themselves. And importantly enough, future releases of this would require board action because we're adopting by the board in the resolution. So that staff's recommendation is to adopt Resolution 0424. The resolution establishing regional principles for the 12th Valley Water District. And with that, I'm going to be able to answer any questions that you might have. Oh, how different. Sorry. Are the work, is the working different than what we saw in the work session? Those exactly the same? I don't, okay, great. Thank you. I guess we don't have any questions for you. And I believe you're reviewing this slide. Recommended that we adopt resolution number 04-24, a resolution establishing the regional criteria for the 12th Valley Water District. Can I have a motion and a second, please? Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Please just come down, so moved.
Commissioner Fisher, a second.
Thank you. All of the panel teams say aye.
Aye.
As opposed not hearing any, the motion passes. And that, I understand, is the last agenda item of the evening. And so with that, unless there's any last words. Well, journey we need to continue. Thank you very much.